President.
Mr. Kazire.
Present.
Ms. Shudek.
Here.
Mr. Arthur.
Present.
Mr. LaFurla.
Present. At this time, we'll take a quick moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no flag. You're having a hard time.
We'll see if we can do the rest of it right. At this point, I'll take approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Yes, moved.
We have a motion by Troy and a second by Dave. Any discussion? Dr. Merlo, did we want to mention that we did move the recognition of employees of the month? So, in talking to Dr. Merlo earlier, we decided to go ahead and move the recognition of employees and students to a later date when we're meeting in person and those students and staff can be there to be recognized. So, we will like to approve the agenda with that change.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
As well.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Now, we have approval of the minutes from the work session and workshop meetings of January 12th and the work session of January 19th. Is there a motion?
I can move. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jill.
I am moved to approve the work session and workshop minutes of the January 12th meeting and the work session of January 19th.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the minutes are approved. And now, we are up to the public participation portion of the agenda. Did we have any members of the public join the meeting tonight? And no individuals contacted us ahead of time? Okay. No, no one did. Okay, thank you. And now, we have informational presentations. Dr. Merlo.
Thank you, Mr. LaFurla, and thank you for allowing us to put a presentation on our work session. The presentation we had this evening, Tim, Mr. Hamilton, and our principal, Dr. Freidenberg from Thomas Jefferson High School have been serving on a committee for us and our district on the First Avenue. And I asked Mr. Hamilton to invite Mr. Garrett tonight for a presentation. And Mr. Hamilton is going to, we know we all had a lot of concerns about a bike trail and a walking trail that would run through Thomas Jefferson, but I think some really good work has been done. And I really wanted the board to catch up on what that work and where they were in the process and kind of to see the timeline. So, Mr. Garrett is joining us tonight. I'm going to allow Mr. Hamilton to kind of introduce him and talk a little bit about the committees and the work that you've been doing and how often that you guys are meeting. And this really presentation is information for the board to ask some questions about the progress that's being made and also to get a real good insight to the work as it's taking place. So, Mr. Hamilton?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Merlo, on board. We have been working the last, it seems like forever, but at least the last couple of years, talking about this, this trail, and it's getting closer to coming to reality. And Dr. Freidenberg, myself, Dean Wilson have all served at different times as part of the advisory committee for the trail. And Brandon Garrett is the Director of Community Development for the City of Council Bluffs. And he and his team have really been great as far as including us and asking us about design ideas and just all aspects of the trail. So, I think what he's going to present tonight, hopefully you guys will appreciate the work that's gone into it and the thoughtfulness around it. So, without further ado, Brandon Garrett from the City of Council Bluffs is here and will present.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Merlo and Mr. Hamilton. I appreciate the opportunity to present to the board today. And this morning, I learned this platform for the first time, so bear with me here. Did we decide this morning it was entire screen, I think, was, was what we wanted to do? So, here we go. Can you all see that? Full screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Again, my name is Brandon Garrett. I'm the Director of the Community Development Department for the City of Council Bluffs. And I'm going to talk about the First Avenue multi-use trail that goes, a portion of that goes through the Thomas Jefferson High School campus. The mission of the city is to continuously improve the quality of life and attractiveness of the City of Council Bluffs. Little bit of history here, way back in the 1800s, when portions of the city were being platted. They did plat a street that would have been First Avenue, but the Chicago and Northwestern Railway ended up occupying that rather than a street. So, for many decades, that First Avenue operated as a railroad, as many of you are aware. But then, somewhat recently, I think somewhere between 2010 and 2012, the tracks were removed. And that right-of-way has reverted back to the city. So, we have a 66-foot wide right-of-way to deal with. It's about 1.8 miles from 16th Street, where we have a trail stubbed in, to 35th Street, where we have a trail stubbed in. If you've ever been by those locations, you'll see a trail that kind of dead-ends at both of those locations. As you're aware, it's just one block south of West Broadway. Here's an old snapshot I found on Google Earth. This was from 2006, back when the tracks were in operation and the grain elevator would actually use the campus to stack some of their cars. So, that was an interesting shot to catch. As most of you are aware, the whole west end of Council Bluffs is very conducive to walking and biking. It's extremely flat and on a nearly perfect grid, which makes it pretty easy to get around and from place or from point to point. This map illustrates the First Avenue being the red line shown there. Talking a little bit about the big picture here, the trail network that we're working on in Council Bluffs and also connections into Omaha. You can see here, we have a lot of trails kind of skirting around areas and maybe where some railroad tracks used to be. But we're really lacking, if you can see my mouse, we're lacking any sort of real safe connections and connectivity for the bulk of the neighborhoods to access the rest of the network and the rest of the city via the trail network. Here's an image that Heartland B Cycle shared with me this fall, just on the activity of their bike rentals. You're probably aware of those. There's a few stations here in Council Bluffs and numerous in Omaha. And they are interested in expanding their system into Council Bluffs further as well. The Great American Rail Trail is a concept right now of connecting across the country, Washington DC all the way out to the state of Washington. And it just so happens that a portion of that comes right through our community over the Bob Carey Bridge. So, there's a lot going on with this, this whole First Avenue effort. I'm mainly here to talk about the multi-use trail, but we have an acronym for this, this whole overall project called FIRST AV, Furthering Interconnections, Revitalization, Streetscapes, Transportation, and Aesthetics for a Vibrant Economy. What we're planning for now, you can see, like I mentioned previously, we have a 66-foot right-of-way. So, how do we, how do we plan for that? What we've done in our early concepts was to offset the trail to one side. And the trail itself is 14 feet wide. If you look at the diagram above, that's a cross-section of the trail. This is actually from the bid documents, so this is what would be built. So, a 14-foot wide trail, 10 feet of that in the middle would be an asphalt surface with two-foot concrete shoulders on each side. So, in a way, that helps folks to maybe self-determine where they should be on the surface. You know, maybe if they're slower moving, where they have a small dog or whatever, maybe they're off to the side. And that asphalt surface, what, there are numerous advantages to that asphalt surface, but part of it is the smooth, continuous surface of it, you know, no cracks or bumps, which was also a safety concern. But we've heard from joggers and runners that they prefer asphalt over concrete. And whether it's concrete or asphalt, our Parks Department and our Public Works Department has all of the equipment and materials that they would need to make timely repairs. Another advantage of the smooth, continuous surface is, well, on just recently, think of all the snow out there. So, being able to go out and very efficiently clear this, this trail will be a great advantage. And in early conversations now with the Parks Director, this trail, once it's complete, would be the number-one priority trail to be cleared through the community. Kind of like an arterial street, if you think of it that way, for our trail network. And then, go out to the other areas after that. Again, I like to call this a multi-use trail, so think of all the different types of users. It's not just a bike trail. You have people walking their dogs. There's families and children, students, older individuals or retirees, joggers, runners. Maybe you have events from time to time. People with varying levels of ability or disability and the different modes that they would need to get around. Again, the smooth contiguous or continuous surface is much more friendly to someone with a walker or a wheelchair, for example. And, you know, all the different ways that we like to get our kids around or haul our kids around in either wagons and their strollers and, and their three-wheelers and all that fun stuff. Skateboards, all of the different types of bikes and different types of bikers. You know, people going off to their jobs or kids going to their elementary school or high school and, or just people out for a recreational ride. And then, you know, we have all these different types of fun ways for people to get around. And more recently, the, what's coming onto the market is these small, what they call micro-mobility, these electronic micro-mobility devices, which many of you, I'm sure, have seen, not only here in Council Bluffs, but all over the country. So, the trail concept, just looking kind of at a plan view, what we've done is rather than meandering all over that 66 feet, we've kind of compressed it to that, just maybe the south half of it. And then, just kind of doing an angle from block to block. So, you can see here where it's just slightly deflected. And what you get, the advantage of that is you, rather than creating this tunnel-type of effect, you, you end up encountering, as you can see here, the way the trees are planted, you, you end up with these varied views of the landscape, but also maintain a very straight path, which cyclists tend to prefer anyway. We're being very thoughtful in the planting of the trees. The species that are being selected by the Parks Director are what he would call a fall color corridor. So, should be a very vibrant display of color all throughout the corridor. We're selecting other perennial shrubs and plants that will be easy for us to maintain and keep at a high quality. And safety factor, big focus for us throughout the design process was the safety factor. Trail lighting, very important. This is the actual lighting that we are going to use on the trail in this display here. You can see in some of the images what that looks like. And here's a, an artist's rendering of what that'll look like in the, in the dark hours. So, whether it's just a safety factor of being able to see obstacles as you're walking, jogging, or riding through the corridor, it's also a safety factor in terms of being able to see people ahead of you or, or see what's going on. So, having this, this whole corridor well-lit through, through all hours will help whether it's, it's other citizens or students get to and from their destinations on this trail, whether that's early in the morning when it's dark out, especially here during the winter, or say, in the dark evenings or after, after those late-night practices or rehearsals where it's, it's dark out in the evenings. So, throughout this 1.8-mile stretch, we're planning seven of these plazas. Three of them will be the 100-foot concept that you see here. It's kind of just a little stopover gathering place. Maybe some activities will end up developing along with that, maybe some programming. The furnishings for these plazas are inspired by the, I guess, the, the history of the railroad and the industrial uses that, that used to be in this corridor and are slowly going away. So, we're going with very hard materials. Not only goes back to that historical link, but easy to maintain and very durable in terms of vandalism, et cetera, and easy for us to replace. One of my favorite features is the bench down there that's designed, it's concrete, but it's designed with these metal bands around it to look like it's, it's a bundle of lumber just waiting to be picked up by a truck or a, or a train or something. We're also including art pedestals for sculptures at each of these, these plazas. So, we're thinking of that right up front, rather than finding a way to incorporate it later. So, all of the, the electrical, if needed, is all included right away, day one. As you're also aware, this corridor, since it's just one block south of West Broadway, we're going along the backs of a lot of those buildings, a lot of those box stores, et cetera. So, there's numerous opportunities for public art, murals, et cetera. It would be great if someone could develop a mural program that, that would approach those businesses. Now, probably what you are most interested about is the Thomas Jefferson High School segment. So, improvements through this segment would include the trail, obviously. The architectural fencing, which I will show you, a small plaza or gathering area on campus for your students, and trees and landscaping associated with the trail. Here's a, just kind of a concept of what that would look like. The, if you can see my cursor here, this is what we call architectural fencing. So, we'll pull up all of that chain link and rusting chain link fencing that's along the corridor on the two sides. And we'll install this black architectural fencing and add some gates. It's not exactly, this is an older image here, but the gates will be larger than this. A seating wall, so that kind of gathering space, little seating areas here and on the other side. Both cases are what I would call on-campus. So, you know, on this side of the fence and on this side of the fence. Now, these are directly from the bid documents, so I don't want to go too far into depth with this. But the main thing that I'm trying to show you here is that, that there's, you know, a number of trees planted along here and shrubs. And, and what you'll notice is, this is 27th Street here on the left. And this is a continuation of that. So, from here, you would jump down to the next drawing and go down. It's in this segment, you know, like I said before, where we're kind of offsetting each block and kind of slanting block to block. On this particular block, however, it's a straight shot. So, you have this unobstructed sightline. That was something that was very important to Mr. Hamilton and Dr. Freidenberg as we were talking, that we maintain these, these sightlines. And we also made some improvements to the ADA accessibility. So, I can show you an aerial later, but there's a kind of a gravel crossing through this area, just to kind of where my cursor is, a little to the right. We're putting in an ADA-accessible paved pathway that then gets the students directly across this driveway and onto a sidewalk versus the, the gravel situation today just goes out into a big parking area and not directly to a sidewalk. The, so now, we've just moved a little further east. This is 25th Street now, and this is that little plaza area that I showed you. So, the seating walls are here and just some more ornamental-type plantings right around there. And that depiction right there. Now, across the street to the east, so this would be behind the Hy-Vee gas station, there would be one of those 100-foot public plazas. So, that's one of our, one of the three would be right there across the street, in terms of the large plazas. Here's another rendering of what that would look like. The, the parking, in case that was a question, the parking is not impacted. We designed around that to where we're kind of just staying within the, what you would consider the existing corridor. And none of the, the parking to the west is, is impacted either. So, just kind of adding up this, this segment, we have the trail construction. Lighting was the big ticket. Landscaping, the, the small seating wall plaza area there on campus totals around $600,000 altogether. Now, this, this project has gone out or gone public to bid. We are in the process of awaiting to see if anyone wants to bid on this project. So, we're kind of in limbo now, but I just wanted to share a couple of things in the bid documents with you that highlighted there, that we have a special provision, the completion of the TJ High School portion of the project. And basically, what we've written in here is that they need to be doing their work between, or after May 28th and completed by August 13th. And, you know, if they're unable to finish within that window, which is basically the summer break, that it's $3,000 a day, starting August 14th. So, we are putting a lot of emphasis on making sure that the, the work is done outside of the school year to cause as little disruption as possible. I know that the school is not entirely closed through the summertime, but we're trying to make the campus as safe as possible and not have a lot of active construction during the actual school year. So, just wrapping up a little bit, we do have a podcast out there. It's called On First. It's available on Google Play, Apple Podcasts, and our website for this project, which is firstavcb.com. And this is an old snapshot from the late 1990s of West Broadway, looking about from I-29 looking east. And it's sort of the transformation we're trying to make, really focusing on placemaking in this area, adding amenities, trees, trail, focusing on design standards of new construction so that they're using quality materials and pay attention to architectural details so that we're creating a place where people want to locate when they come to this metro, when they arrive here for this, for their jobs, et cetera. Again, our website is firstavcb.com, and there is all of my contact information. I, I make myself available to, to any of you. I, I meet with all sorts of groups, book clubs, any sort of group or individual to talk about any aspect of this project, and I would be happy to. And at this time, I could answer any questions or back up to any slides that you had specific questions on.
Thank you, Brandon. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah. I can start, so I've actually, I think I'm caught up right now, Brandon, with your podcast, so I've listened to it. You got, you got at least one.
Yeah, one, all right.
Woo, anyway, okay. So, just a few of the questions. So, within the contract, would there be the ability? I know, obviously, we've just had, I think we've about blown through our snow days. Is that something that we could amend in that contract when it would possibly be accepted? That we would go beyond the regular snow days? Or just if it would pass up May 28th, that we have students on campus at the end there?
Well, that's, you know, I guess we needed a date to put into the bid documents. And I, I think, I think if, if any contractor is reasonable, what I've always told Mr. Hamilton and Dr. Freidenberg is that one of their requirements is that there will be coordination with the school and that the school needs to know what's going on. So, if, if there's a, if there's a change in date, or, well, I guess I should say, before we sign with, with the bidder, we could, we could say, hey, look, due to some snow days, et cetera, we're going to have to push that to June 2nd or, or whatever it is. You know, we, I, I think we still have latitude to do such a thing.
Um, so there's that, um, so you already talked on the plaza being across the street, so that's cool. I guess one of my big questions is really at 25th Street and then 27th Street, just in terms of the crossing. Naturally, I mean, if we're going to be building this multi-use trail through the middle of one of the most populous parts of Council Bluffs, I mean, the high school students are naturally going to be going there. They're not currently at active intersections. I guess just what is really the plan for those crossings and how to come traffic in those areas, especially right off of 25th and Broadway? I mean, with Hy-Vee and all the businesses in that particular area, I think more than 27th, honestly. Just what would really be the plan on that?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up because I, I don't have a, I don't have a specific drawing for that available in this presentation, but there will be crossing markings, et cetera, where we don't have them today on 25th. Well, and 27th. I would say, for my part, I would be most concerned about 25th, just having observed the, the area. But initially, so we're doing this in two phases. Sorry, I didn't explain that. The first phase is 25th to 35th. But the consultants advised, and I think it's a good idea, that we go just beyond 25th. So, we're going to do that plaza here in the first phase. And the reason for that was so that we could do this crossing and install that now. In my numerous observations of 25th and how the students just generally behave, I see people just running across the street there all the time. So, hopefully, if we provide a safe crossing, yeah, we can never guarantee it, right? But if we now have a safe crossing to provide for the students and others that, that now they have a, a safe designated place to cross in the middle of the block, rather than running straight across to Hy-Vee Gas or wherever they want to go.
Well, thank you. And then, my other connection or question, just on the like micro-mobility, in terms of like bikes, scooter, whatever you want to say. Does, so on the, like the scooters kind of front, does Council Bluffs actually have any kind of ordinance on that currently? I don't really know if that's something that we've even seen as a city.
You are so up to speed that you're a little bit ahead of yourself because we're drafting that language now. So, we're, what we're trying to do, since we're, we shouldn't look at ourselves as a 60,000, 65,000 person community in the middle of Iowa. We are part of a metro. So, we are drafting a So we are drafting a a an ordinance that's very similar to Omaha's. So there's consistency, uh, because people don't just stop at the river. Uh, so at least there'll be some consistency there uh, on on how things are treated.
Okay, cool. Well, good to know on that point that I'm ahead there, I guess, a little bit. Um, and then is there any real plan just along that Broadway corridor for some of those like B-cycle, um, just stations to be put in? I know there had been discussions about like the bus station moving closer to like Hy-Vee so people could just not have to cross the street and add that extra bit on getting groceries, whatever. Um, is that something that we have thought about? Just would that be going on like the campus side? Is that something that we'd probably have to get another just kind of agreement with the city on?
So your question is about the B-cycle stations?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, they, Bcycle is very interested in First Avenue, and and we do have a representative from Bcycle that's on the same committee that Mr. Hamilton and Dr. Freidenberg are on. And they would like to locate a couple of stations on the corridor, but not on your campus. It would likely be at these plazas that I was talking about. Uh, there would be hooked up for that there and and place for them to to uh, put their their docking stations at that location.
Cool, and then, um, just a few more. This is one of those things I actually really, really enjoy. Um, so hopefully, one, uh, we can incorporate student work. That's more just a comment in the future for art and things that we can do. So hopefully, we can be engaged on that. But then also, um, just in terms of the two different connections, I know like we're the 35th Street that would sync up over and then connect into that the west side of the Levy base, or not quite there, but, um, uh, west of the interstate, not quite to the Levy yet, but west side of the interstate. That connects there. Where is the natural, is that like Mid-City Trail is the end of this particular project? Or does that connect down into like Bloomer area where that would serve families there? Into downtown Council Bluffs? I just don't really know what that looks like.
Well, this, so this specific project or construction project is pretty much focused on 35th to 16th. What we, and there there are some trail segments then too that get you to about Indian Creek. And there's a creek or a trail that runs north, south approximately there, maybe around 10th Street-ish, 12th Street. Um, what what we would like to do, once we get First Avenue under construction, we can start planning for how do we make the link now from 16th Street all the way to Bayless Park and through the 100-block area all the way out to Kern and to the to Railroad Highway where the county's working on a trail that goes out to Neola. So this is the big trail, um, you know, trying to make these connections and connecting the park spaces. So we would have Bayless Park, we would have Cochran Park, which we are making some improvements to, by the way. We're gonna get some new playground equipment, et cetera, and a new ballpark, which is just category corner from one of our elementary schools, so perfect. And then obviously, in the west, we have the Hannafin Park.
Cool, okay. I think, um, that's all my questions for now. Anything else, I'll probably just send you in an email for some other questions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon, it's Troy Arthur. I just had a question. It appears we've really, I see there's still a spot there for that transit corridor, but a lot of these other improvements look like that might kind of impede on that. Is that still a thought down the road? Is that, is are we moving forward with this to to connect these areas? Um, and then that's something we always have to keep in our back of our mind. I'm just curious on where that stands, I guess.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Hamilton, having gone through this whole process as well, it's it's been a a little difficult to focus on what we're trying to achieve today, which is the multi-use trail, but also not preclude ourselves from a transit opportunity in the future if we decide to go that route. But that that's that's the reason for leaving leaving a bit of that corridor open and planting with grass for an undetermined amount of time. Um, so with this design, we haven't precluded ourselves from being able to do that. Uh, but our focus of short term right now is to build this multi-use trail.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Brandon, it's Jill Schudak. I have two questions. Um, one, can you speak a little bit about the fencing or the gates that we'd be using going from the one building to the other? I know security is a big concern for us, um, and we've been trying to, you know, make our campuses as secure as possible.
Yeah, so I would say, oh, first of all, we we just wanted to improve the aesthetics from from the start. So there's still, the the fencing will be essentially where it is today. There's there's two fences with the trail corridor in the middle. Um, there's a a gate access to the, what I would call the the practice field area, uh, just like there is today. The uh, the new ADA uh, access that I showed you a a slide on, where currently it's just a break in the fence with the the gravel there. Uh, and then the the main, um, the main crossing would be that that connection between the two buildings. And each each of those openings have would, uh, will have gates. And, you know, I think that'll be the, you know, the schools, I guess, up to the school on how they want to lock or monitor, uh, you know, in terms of hours of when they want to lock it or if they want to lock it at all. We'll, uh, we'll leave that completely up to the school on how they want to manage the security of those gates. Uh, you know, I also talked about, um, I think, uh, some signage, um, maybe along that fence as well that we could put up uh, that would clarify that almost like a, I don't know what it would say, but it's almost something like a no trespassing, you know, beyond this point. Uh, uh, students and staff only, you know, that sort of thing. Um, I think that would be appropriate. Uh, we could also, I again, I don't know what the verbiage would be, but we could have some sort of signage along the trail too to indicate, you know, this is a pass-through, um, segment, you know, there's no, uh, no opportunity to to stall in this area. Plus, we have a, we have a public plaza that's across the street. So hopefully, you know, if anyone wants to to take a break, it'll it'll be, uh, just beyond the campus anyway.
Okay, and then my second question is, is can you talk a little bit about then um, the upkeep for that section that would be running through campus? So would the district be, you know, for example, we just had the snowstorm. Would be we be responsible for clearing those pathways? Or since it it's a city that pathway that goes through, would the city or the grass or the tree up upkeep?
I'll I'll start with the snow because that's on all of our minds. Um, I think it it basically, I don't think it'll change for you because you'll want to, if we're not, if we don't get there first, you'll want to, uh, clear your crossing point, right? Like you already do today. But like I said earlier, the Parks Department would view this as the top priority to remove snow on the trail. So that is not a a school responsibility. You know, the city's gonna go end to end. They're not gonna skip your two-block segment and go around and and pick up. So I think that'll that'll be really good. Uh, in terms of the the landscaping as well, uh, the Parks Department uh, will be maintaining the the grass and the the shrubs and trees, whatever uh, ends up being planted in that. So that's that's not on the school either.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? The only question I had is actually for you, Dr. Murillo, is we, do we have a plan for that summer? For when we have students in the building? Is there a plan for where they will park, how they will get around the construction?
Right now, we'll have to see how many students we use. Um, will it be something that we want to move, um, some of those programs to AL versus or Wilson, maybe? Um, but we'll have to some way, you know, utilize that one parking lot in the front that they have on the side, and maybe it's something we can even partner with Hy-Vee or something and not have any of the students parking in the back. I do worry a little bit about football practice and some of our fall sports, but I think it is something that we can work with the city on to get, you know, more details of how that's gonna look, when they're gonna be in which area. They won't be, um, conducting any kind of construction on our football fields per se. Uh, but they will be, you know, uh, putting the fencing up and, uh, creating the new pavement there. So it will be something that we'll just have to look at and work closely um, as we get into the spring. And once they get there, I know they've sent this out to bid, but I'd like to know exactly what their timeline. And then we need to sit down with, um, uh, the administration of TJ, Mr. Hamilton, and look at what fall sports could be impacted. We also will have baseball going on during this time. So, um, I just am waiting to see what exactly the timeline will be because sometimes you can send things out to bid and it kind of still gets backed up. So, um, we're kind of waiting and seeing, um, uh, because, um, I think it is moving faster than we thought it would. Um, but I also know that, um, I don't want to take on extra work or or heighten the concerns at the building until we know exactly where that's gonna be. Then we'll get a plan into place. And we'll, and I'm sure Dr. Worthman can move summer programs around for us if we need to.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Brandon. We appreciate your information and presentation.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
And that concludes our presentation, Mr. LaFurla.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have the first of three resolutions. First is a resolution to approve the employee handbook revisions for the remaining 2020, 2021 school year as presented. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I will move that we approve the employee handed provisions, uh, revisions for the remaining 2020, 2021 school year.
Second? We have a motion in a second, and there was detailed, um, document provided in the board docs, so thank you for that. Any discussion?
Yep, my only question was on, I apologize because I'm on a shorter screen here. Uh, at the bottom of page one in the holiday pay schedule, it said to add the April 2nd, 2020. I'm assuming that that's just a typo and it should be 2021 since 2020 was, April 2nd was last year's school?
You are correct. Thanks for catching, Jill, I'm sorry.
No, no problem at all. I just wanted to to double check that one. And then, uh, Mr. Melbourne, will that be a set April 2nd go forward? Or will that kind of rotate each year based off of the holiday season?
Yeah, what we're trying to do is remove that Easter language since everybody in our district doesn't practice, um, or recognize Easter. So we'll just make that the date from from moving forward.
Perfect, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Schudak?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Dr. Agrest?
Yes.
And Mr. LaFurla?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now, we have a request for SBRC spending authority for students attending Grandwood Woodward Granger Special Education Program. Is there a motion?
I can move to request a spending authority in the amount of $2,851.32 for a student attending the Grandwood Woodward Granger Special Education Program.
Second.
Thank you. A motion in a second, any discussion? Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Ms. Schudak?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Dr. Agrest?
Yes.
And Mr. LaFurla?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now, before us, for us, we have a resolution to approve a land use agreement for Amelia Bloomer Suffrage Centennial Historical Marker on the Bloomer Elementary School lawn. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I will move approval of the installation and land use agreement for an Amelia Bloomer Suffrage Centennial Historical Marker on the lawn.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, and I know, Dr. Murillo, I think you had said in, um, one of the Friday notes that you had asked about, um, or they had asked about adding, um, Amelia Bloomer's name onto the official school name with, um, because I believe it was her husband who was the superintendent in the district. Um, has anything happened on that front? Or are we looking at a doing committee to make that amendment at all?
Yes, we are. I've assigned that to Diane, Ms. Ostrowski, so I'll let her provide you with that update.
Yes, hello. We are eager to put a committee together as we have in the past when we're talking about renaming a school or adapting it. And so Dr. Murillo has asked me to convene that committee. And certainly, if anybody would like to serve on that from the community, they're welcome to do so. But I know Mrs. Kasmercheck, the principal at Bloomer, is very eager to serve as well as the representative from our Council Bluffs Public Library, who really initiated this project. And so we'll get moving on that, and Dr. Murillo will guide me as to when she wants you to consider that request in the future.
Awesome, wonderful. Good to recognize the women from Council Bluffs, so excited about that.
Any other discussion? Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Schudak?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Dr. Agrest?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now, we have approval of the consent agenda, which includes special education contracts, the personnel agenda, uh, December purchasing card transactions and vendor payments, and the December 2020 financials. Is there a motion?
I move approval of our consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. A motion in a second, any discussion? Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Agrest?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Ms. Schudak?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes, and the motion carries. That concludes our business for tonight, and we will see you all again on February 9th.
Have a great night.
Have a good evening.